Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August meeting. We have a very full agenda tonight. This is the 24th meeting of the 140th Council of the City of Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. We have some counselors on Zoom. We have some that are that are absent tonight, but we have lots to do. So the first thing I'll ask, is there any disclosures of interest for members? Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes, I guess.
Thank you, worship. I have motioned that the minutes of the meetings held on July the 11th, 2022 be confirmed.
Peters.
Moved by Counsel Peter, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next order of business are deputations. We have one this evening, Mr. David Smith, convener for the St. Thomas 45 and Over NBC Hockey League, is in attendance to discuss ice time allocation at Memorial Arena.
Mr. Smith, please join us. You get to go first, be as brief as you can, but as factual as you can. And then the members will be able to ask you some questions after. So David, floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship, and the members of City Council for allowing me to appear. St. Thomas 45 and NBC Hockey League, it's a mouthful. Operationally, we're known as Masters 45 Hockey, or just M45. Couple of nods to people that I thought would be here. Dan Sheridan, who played for many years in M45. And Chief Chris Herridge, who is well on his way to the M45 Hall of Fame as a center.
In his mind.
With many assists from defenseman Sergeant Travis Sandham. And we often wonder how he got to become a sergeant, but now we know. So hockey is ingrained in the fabric of Canadian society. It is part of our identity. Canada leads the world in the number of indoor arenas with 2,900, leading the United States by more than 1,300. We stand at second at 1,600. At the center of communities across Canada is the ice arena. In St. Thomas, we have a continuum of hockey organizations across all age groups. Minor hockey from ages five to six through to age 18. The Sunday Night League for age 18 and up. There was a 35 and over Saturday Night League in St. Thomas, but it disbanded mainly due to poor management. There's also the 35 and over league in Port Stanley. The 45 and over Thursday Night League. 15 over morning leagues and 16 over morning league in Port Stanley. Our league started in 1966. St. Thomas residents playing in the Port Stanley 35 and over sought to start a new league in St. Thomas to fill the gap for older players in that league. M45 is full of working working players. Our average age is 53. They are men who have worked in St. Thomas for the last 25 to 40 years, supporting St. Thomas hockey arenas, and they love to play. I played in it for 17 years. So we are, we were absolutely astonished receiving the email on July 8th, stating our 6:30 to 11:00 p.m. Thursday night ice at Memorial was no longer available. I called the ice administrator, minor hockey was taking it. The old boundary agreement was broken, and there was an influx of 100 plus new players from Port Stanley. 26 years flush down the drain. My first call was to David Wharton, ex-councilman and M45 alumnus, who put me in contact with Councilman Gary Clark, who presented that July 8th email to council at the July 11th meeting for discussion. My next call, Jeff Bray. Ice requests have to be in June the 1st. We got notified July the 8th. Jeff told me that ice requests by minor hockey could possibly be relinquished after Labor Day. My next call was to the OMHA offices, who gave me the email address of Dean Johnson, OMH Director, OMHA Director for our region. I emailed explaining what happened to M45 and wanted to know how and why. What came out of this was that there was a new agreement executed by the MHAs of St. Thomas and Port Stanley in April of this year that gives St. Thomas control of player movement in St. Thomas and Central Elgin. Over the years, I have often heard about minor hockey's priority over ice time allocation. It has been an earworm. Minor hockey priority. What does the ice allocation policy actually say? Section three, priority for winter ice time. For minor hockey, the wording is priority consideration, not absolute priority. What is consideration? Careful thought, deliberation, something that needs to be thought out very carefully before deciding or acting? Thoughtfulness for other people. Eliminating M45 hockey leaves a hole in our community's hockey continuum. What does the fact that the new agreement between St. Thomas and Port Stanley MHAs is for one year only? What does that mean? It means that it is an experiment. Running roughshod over our community's ice allocation. Who is next? The Sunday Night League, who now are starting one hour later due to minor hockey? Are they gone in '23, '24? That league has been around for 40 years now. M45 has efficiencies in playing consecutive back-to-back games. Player and goalie shortages, you grab a player from the previous or next game to fill into your game. Joining our teammates and other teams at a restaurant after the game. St. Thomas and Port Stanley MHAs are not weak sisters. They are well organized and flush with substantial liquidity. They retain lawyers to opine on the legality of the old boundary agreement. Was this a truly independent evaluation? The simple fact is that they gave STMHA what they wanted. Power to an open window on players. Presently, M45 is part of that cost. I called Joe Daley, president of STMHA, and Steven Vandenhoven of Port Stanley MHA, left messages about who I was and what I wanted to discuss. I wanted a copy of the new agreement and the old, never got a call back. I asked Dean Johnson, the OMHA Director, if MHAs were publicly accountable. He told me they were only accountable to their members, which to me means the parents of the children. If anyone here is one of those parents or grandparents, do M45 a favor and call Joe or Steven and bring those documents into the light. The MHAs are under the wing of the OMHA. The OMHA is a partner to Hockey Canada. We all know how well that is going right now. Back in the day, it was called a royal commission. Now it's a government inquiry. Last Friday, Michael Brindamore, the Board Chairman of Hockey Canada resigned. There was the usual published statement about this and that, and going forward, the way forward. What wasn't widely reported was that in July, Brindamore tabled a motion to remove CEO Scott Smith, a 37-year vet of Hockey Canada. It was defeated by the board. Scott Smith staying in power is tantamount to letting the Foxes rebuild the hen house. Which way is the St. Thomas hen house moving? Toward the ICE mission statement of promoting and encouraging participation to the overall benefit of the community, fair and consistent practices, or yielding to the ambition of the STMHA? The ICE policy is 12 years old. It needs some addendums, or it needs to follow its mission. I'm truly hoping this presentation is not M45's valediction. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Questions from council? Counselor Baldwin says.
Thank you. I have a comment first and foremost. Thank you very much for your deputation. It is appreciated. I love hockey as a spectator. Growing up in St. Thomas, girls were not allowed to play hockey. So next to the arena, St. Thomas built an outdoor pool. That was 50-plus years ago. There has been no pool since. But yet aquatics is the number one lifelong female activity. It is also the number one sport in Canada. It is the number one for recreation, the number one for fitness, the one, number one for competitive swimming, the number one for instructional, the number one for therapy, number, number one for family swims. And yet, we in the city of St. Thomas have no community center, and our population is greater than 40,000. Our community is growing. Maybe in addition to the community center, we look, which I am chair, we also look more at the Bostwick model that includes ice pads with a pool. For me, this is also an equity issue, because swimming is the number one in Canada. Hockey is number four. Maybe as chair of the proposed community center, we look more at that Bostwick model or an additional one that I sent to my fellow members of council. More people enroll in swimming because it's 25% of the cost of hockey. It is the most popular sport in Canada. Soccer is the most popular team sport. And 59 years after doing my first length in the little YMCA pool that no longer exists, I am still swimming. I have coached, I have taught, I have trained, and I had led. And that's what we hope for, is that all members of the city of St. Thomas have the physical activities that they need in order to move forward. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Counsel Peters, and then Counsel Clark.
Thanks very much, your worship. Well, tonight I want to focus in on this issue. And my, my, my one question, and I had emailed it previously, was how does an outside agency supersede an agreement that the city of St. Thomas has with hockey organizations? I don't understand how that can override an agreement that we have. So that troubles me. I agree with the speaker's comments, and I thank, thank him for his comments regarding that it is time to update this agreement. It being 12 years old, we do need to have a look at that very seriously. But, you know, many of these individuals are taxpayers in St. Thomas. And he used, he used the word of trying to find a balance. And I think we do, we need to recognize that, yes, we need to support our youth and encourage the youth to participate in activities. But we also need to think of those individuals that, for the most part, pay the bills and subsidize these operations, because we all know that arenas do not make money, that the taxpayers as a whole subsidize them. So I really think that we need to push back on this, and that this is a program worth preserving. And I won't support anything further than that, but thanks very much, worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, David, for your comments this evening. And I agree wholeheartedly with, with the league keeping its ice time. It's our policy, and, you know, our employees are just administering our policy. And they're, it's a policy that's been around for a while, and they're interpreting it in the way that they feel that we've written it. So I still think that council can carry the day by, by passing a motion this evening, or, and next time we meet, to, to, to basically say that the M45 league gets to keep their ice time, and minor hockey can work around with this. Minor hockey has no idea how many kids are going to come. They have no idea at all. If I'm a kid in Port Stanley or in Belmont, and I'm playing house league, I'm not coming to St. Thomas if I'm in Pee-wee or the younger, younger groupings. This is all about traveling kids and All-Star teams. And, and I think we have to take a look at the whole, the whole continuum of hockey. Kids that want to play house league to adults that want to continue to try and live the glory days. And so I think we need to discuss this further, and I will bring that up under new business tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I'll go next to Counselor Herbert.
Thank you, worship. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, not that you needed to inform us, because we probably got about 50 emails with all the information. So, but that's okay. It gives us a good handle on what we need to know. You've made every effort to try to work with the other side, and it doesn't sound like you're getting much cooperation. And I think when you have a league for 26 years, I compared it to a bowling league. When I bowled, there were six lanes. I knew all 12 teams, all players, and we'd have an evening and we'd socialize. I'm sure it's the same with your league, with, with the hockey. It's a social league. You don't want to play Monday, Wednesday, Friday, just a game. The whole part of the game is socializing and obviously do that. So I would support the thoughts tonight. And even if a motion was put on the floor tonight, you keep Thursday, I would, I would support it, because I really think this is important. And they're taxpayers, and I talked to a few of the participants on, on the weekend, and they, they donate money to minor hockey, you know, to keep it going, and they're taxpayers, and they work in the city, and 26 years is a long time. So, so anyway, thank you very much. And I guess my last comment, when all the discussion is all said and done, I would be happy, your worship, to hear Jeff Bray's comments, because I know he's been meeting with them just to see what the other side is. So anyway, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Counselor Kohler.
Thanks, your worship. I'm not going to add too much more. I guess there's definitely in agreeance with everything that's been said, and especially if there's discussion under new business, because I think Counselor Clark's right. We need to revisit the policy and make sure that staff's hands aren't tied into allowing something like this to happen. But we need to look at, I certainly support your request tonight and appreciate your comments. And I think other members of council, not only from this group, but it's impacting other groups as well, not just, not just yours. So I think it definitely needs a revision to the policy, because there's other groups that are having their ice time allocated differently and maybe cut based on this as well. And I think Counselor Clark mentioned it, too, that arenas currently operate at a, at a subsidy from all the taxpayers. So our decision in working on this has to be responsible to all of them, too, because minor hockey, their rates do not cover the cost. Some of the other users, the, come close to cost recovery. So as we remove hours from them, then the support from all the other taxpayers, especially ones that don't use the arena, become even, becomes even greater. So we have to look at that fine balance. But I look forward to the discussion under new business, and thanks again for your comments.
Further questions or comments from any of the counselors? Then David, we'll thank you. You can get guests that will likely have a little more discussion after, after that. But thank you for your presentation tonight. I, I finished my hockey career probably poorly in the over 45 league, too. So it was, I remember the camaraderie far more than I remember the skill. Thank you. Thank you, David. Mr. Bray, would you like to help us on this one, too, please? I know there's not a motion on the floor, and it's still just a discussion. But Jeff, what, what, what thoughts do you have on where we are?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to council. It's pretty well summed up, the situation that we're in. Per Counselor Clark's comments, we're following policy. This doesn't help the situation, but we had planned to redo the policy and bring it forward to council after this season. The situation is, minor hockey has requested five and a half hours extra over and above what they had last year. So that five and a half hours has been split up for within the M45 slot, and they got another hour and a half on Sunday. I have staff, I've chatted with the president, Joe Doyle, a couple times. I know staff has, he doesn't want to move that allocation. Another issue is certain kids can't play that late at night. There is other times available, but neither parties wish to, to take those times for reasons stated.
Okay, so if, I don't want to make something up. So if, if we, if this group council decided, we'd like the over 45 group to still have Thursday nights. Is this going to be a killer motion for the minor hockey? Or is it something that can be accommodated? You mentioned it was tough to find the extra five hours.
Well, it's tough to find it in a single block. There is, there is time available. I've jotted it down here. For example, Tuesday nights at Memorial, times available 9:30 to 11:00. Saturday night at the Timken, 8:45 to 11:15 is available. But again, that's getting late at night for the kids in minor hockey. There's non-prime available. All the prime, that's the only prime ice that's still available. Non-prime, we have four to five available and seven to eight available, Monday to Friday at both arenas. So, I mean, that is, that, that is available, good for smaller kids. But you reach, you get into the logistics of getting them out of school, parents getting off work, getting them to the rink in time.
But you're right, that's the logistics when we have that amount of ice time.
Yeah.
Counselor Kohler, did I see your hand?
Yes, and I don't know if maybe the, it'd be more appropriate when the discussion comes under new business, but I just want to make sure that Jeff is still here for that, because I know the last two years are not a good example. But there's been other years that we've had requests for more hours being allocated to certain groups, and then those hours end up burning. We've taken them away. So that's, that's one of the issues that I want to make sure doesn't happen here, because that's, that's exactly what's happened in the past. And I'm afraid, again, reading some of your communications earlier, that that's a possibility of this time again, thinking that, okay. And then now we're going to have an arena sitting in port half-empty, because people are playing up here, if that many people do come. So I think there's options for people in the minor groups without impacting the others. And, and, you know, it's important that we still have the development hockey, and we take care of their needs as well. But it can't come at, at all costs, right? So.
And I did broach them, minor hockey perhaps booking time in Port Stanley. I hate sending business out of town for many reasons. But apparently, they have to go through the Minor Hockey Association there to do that, and their minor hockey said no. It's also important to note that I haven't seen a boundary map, but it's my understanding that aside from, it goes down into Port Stanley, the new Minor Hockey Association boundary, but it also redrew areas that were traditionally outside of St. Thomas. For example, Shaw Valley, Orchard Park, and the new subdivision south of Southdale. The name escapes me at the moment. So areas that have been traditionally part of St. Thomas are, you're drawing kids in from there, too.
Okay, Counselor Clark, and then we'll wrap it up and put it under new business, or we'll do it now?
Yeah, just while we got Jeff. You mentioned minor hockey needs five and a half more hours.
Correct.
And you've already gotten, gotten them one and a half hours on the Sunday.
Yes.
So now we're down to four and a half. You mentioned a time slot on Saturday.
Yep.
That's, it's later, but it's a Saturday.
Yeah.
So depending on what age group they want to put in there, it looks like, it looks like we are up to three hours that have been accomplished.
Yes, actually, it's only four hours they need.
So, so there's three hours. We're just, you know, even if we give, give the time back to the M45 league, their minor hockey's short an hour, and, and we still don't know whether those kids are going to come or not. So I think, I think, I think after we have further discussion, we should be able to come up with a solution tonight.
Okay, since I've, I've heard no motion, we'll put it off till new business. But thank you. We, Mr. Bray, will you still be around if we come back to talk to it again? Thank you. That's what we'll do. Let's move on with our agenda.
Your worship, council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following matters. First committee is strategic direction and development. First two items under new business relate to notices of public meetings to take place by Zoom on, the first one on August the 11th, from the Committee of Adjustment regarding an application for consent to enter into a lease agreement with Skyline and Sobies in excess of 21 years for the property at 1010 Talbot Street. And the second Committee of Adjustment hearing will take place on August the 25th at 10:00 a.m., and that's regarding an application for consent by Happy Capital, Inc. to sever a lot from 122 to 124 Edward Street for employment lands purposes. The next three notices of public meetings relate to site plan meetings that will occur on August the 10th at 2:00 p.m. via Zoom. The first one relates to a proposal for a miniature golf course at 79 to 83 Elm Street. The second one to consider a proposal to add two portable classrooms at 84 Park Avenue. And the third one to consider a proposal to add a pylon sign at 417 Wellington Street. Unless there are any further items from the members under strategic direction and development, we'll now move into community engagement and services. And there is nothing on the agenda at this time, unless there are any items from the members.
If I can ask Counselor Peters, I'm seeing you out of the corner of one eye. So Steve, if you have anything, wave vigorously so that I can catch you, please.
I certainly will, your worship.
All right. Carry on.
Seeing none for community engagement and services, next order business is infrastructure and civic operations. First item is a request for traffic control changes on Raven Avenue. I have a motion that report ES 5422 relating to the request for traffic control changes on Raven Avenue be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend by law 45-89. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Burgess.
Questions or comments from council? Counsel Wookiee.
Thank you very much, your worship. I want to thank the Environmental Services Department. I think this is a clever so, solution to help a problem that does not involve any kind of speed bumps or anything like that. And so I'd like to thank them for that idea. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Scary?
Next item relates to a new Boulevard bylaw. I have a motion that report ES 5522 relating to the new Boulevard bylaw be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to enact a new Boulevard bylaw. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried?
Unless there are any further items from the members under infrastructure.
Counselor Baldwin says.
Thank you, through you to City Manager and Mr. Bray. I was wondering if we could be receiving an update. I noticed the footings are in on St. Catherine Street for the update on the childcare center, if that is possible. Thank you.
Mr. Bray, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you. You can see that the foundation has finally been born. We experienced a number of delays on the project, unfortunately. There was a labor shortage, there was a concrete shortage, and there were some issues around the design. So we're back on track, I think, and it will be slightly delayed, I believe. But we're hopeful it will be done shortly in the new year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Peters, I see your hand up.
Thanks, your worship. Mr. Bray can stay for, I have three items I'd like to raise under this agenda, please, and Jeff can stay for the first one. I appreciated the email that he had sent us regarding the tragic lightning strike that took place of the osprey nest. It's my understanding, though, that in order to encourage the osprey to come back next year, we need to have a new pole installed sooner than later, that I'm being told from some of my bird friends that we need to ensure that there's something there by September or October at the very latest. So I, I think it's been, it's been a wonderful sight to see the osprey at Lake Margaret. And, you know, who would have expected a lightning strike? But I just hope that this has been a success story. And I hope that we can do everything we can to accelerate the reinstallation of the bad, the bad to encourage the osprey to return.
Mr. Bray, on osprey nest?
Thank you, Mayor Preston. I'm happy to report that we reached out to some community partners. Excuse me, and one that has requested. Excuse me, and one that has requested to remain anonymous. Has come forward with a donation of a pole and the installation of the pole. My staff are actually, we've got details from the federal government, the International Osprey Foundation. And Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, so our staff will be building a platform. Justin's staff is going to assist with his back to get the hole, so it's a. Lot of people pulling weight here and we're looking at getting this in within the end of September. So we're and the other good part is we're going to install another pole. There's two poles out there, as most people know, one, for whatever reason, the osprey don't like it, so we've engaged. A member of the community who has been extremely helpful, she's associated with the International Osprey Foundation, so with her input. We're going to locate and install a new platform as well.
Further, Counselor Peters?
Thank you, your worship, my next item is the this would be more of a Justin Lawrence issue. Traffic issue, the intersection of Elm and Sunset Drive. With with Sunset Drive being closed right now between Stanley Street and Talbot Street and. A that is there a way that we can have the signal if I was turned if I was. Westbound on Elm Street and turning left onto Sunset heading towards Port Stanley. Only about three cars, four cars are making it through and the light turns. Yet there's nobody going southbound on Sunset Drive. And is there a way that we can easily fix this to have the? The left turn or that that whole light extended at Sunset and Elm? And I have one more for Justin after this one, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, you're up.
Thanks, it's a great idea, and it's actually in place already. So it was extended from the number of, I think it was about five cars would get through. Before and it's it's up to about fifteen, I've done it myself, it's possible that someone might have. Like reverted with a power outage or something, I'll check on that tomorrow, but it should be in place and it's it's maximized. Westbound, as you say, and minimized north south, so that lots of left turners can clear there.
Back to you, Counselor Peter.
And my my last one is the intersection of Talbot, Burwell and Fairview. If you are southbound on Burwell and attempting to turn eastbound onto Talbot Street, you are taking your life into your hands. You Justin and I had spoken about this one previously, but I've I've had someone inquire to me. Because if you have. Traffic northbound on Fairview making the left turn onto Talbot, they're all on the one lane. And the other lane, because of the crest of that bridge, you have you can you cannot see if someone is coming at you or not. And is there a way to have a a more specialized? Left turn for traffic off of Burwell onto. Onto Talbot Street, it it just I I I went and tried it out myself and. You know, it is hold on to your hat and hope that there's nothing coming northbound on Fairview in the right hand lane. And my other question was, and I just will throw this out there, so a a number of. Online keyboard warriors are saying, well, we should just take the bridge out. I'd be curious to know how many millions it would cost to have the Fairview Ave overpass. Removed and a level intersection installed there, but my primary focus is on. Making the left turn off of Burwell onto Talbot and what can we do to? Make people feel a little safer, thanks, your worship, and that's the end of my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you for your seventeen part question there, I'll try to remember all those parts, but. Yeah, the fix is to remove the bridge and it is on the capital plan. We've just found out we'll probably need to accelerate it a bit. I don't know about two thousand and twenty three, maybe twenty four, twenty twenty four. But the fix is yet remove the bridge and make the left turn lanes align with each other, so right now they're they're. Opposed, they're opposite a bit, they're they're offset, so we need to make them perfectly aligned so that. Both lefts can see past to the throughbound cars coming the other direction. But that fix requires. Building some road, taking out the bridge, it's a it's a significant capital project, so we need to. We need to budget that, we need to design it, we need to build it. There are other intersections around the city that are like that, it used to be a historical way to build lefts. But but I do agree with a fix, we should do it. And we just need to get it budgeted and and in underway.
Thank you. Further questions from council?
There's no interim, there's no interim fix that we can do to. Add a a left turn signal in, put a delayed light in?
Counselor, or Mr. Lawrence?
Through through the mayor to Counselor Peters. What you may be contemplating is a separate phase, so. North bounds go on their own phase and then all the south bounds go, so you 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 know commissioners and Wellington and London operates in that manner. It is possible it would take. Rebuilding the traffic signals. In in theory, it's possible in the short term, if council's interested, we can try and. I get a price, there's pros and cons to that, you you lose a lot of. Like you delay a lot more people in the north and the southbound direction, but we we could do a report if council's interested.
Let's do that. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship, this would be for Jeff Bray. Just wondered if there was an update on the park beside the library, I think you talked about it last time, I just wonder how it's going.
I will be going out for tender this week. Yes. Through Mayor Preston.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, next item.
We meant now move into corporate governance and administration, the first item relates to additional staffing requirements in children's services. Have a motion that report SES S ten twenty two relating to the additional staffing requirements for children's services. Be received for information and further council approve the addition of a program operations coordinator. For the period of twenty four months within the Social Services Department Children's Services Program area. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments, Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship, I I think this is just fantastic when we can have this person put in place for two years. And no cost to the city, so I I would support it fully, so thank you.
Further thoughts? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
Next item relates to the declaration of surplus lands. I have a motion that report PR O two twenty two relating to the declaration of. Forty nine eighty six eighty seven Dunkirk Drive and three ten and twenty Simcoe Street as surplus lands. Be received for information and further that council declare the properties at forty nine eighty six eighty seven Dunkirk Drive and three ten and twenty. Simcoe Street to be surplus to the city and further the council direct administration to undertake administrative actions to dispose of the lands. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments, Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you, your worship, for anybody watching tonight or reading this, I I just want to stress from the report. That these are currently vacant, so it's not like we are evicting anybody. In order to sell these, and that's that's been our strategy for a long time, that's not what we want to do. But every time we sell one of these units, we build a capital to build more efficient, modern, denser.
Housing.
Better housing, thank you.
Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship, well, when I saw this, I'm they're vacant, but are they livable? I mean, we have, there's a one, two, three, four, eight, or nine or ten, if they're livable. And you don't have to, is it just vacant? Vacant houses we're looking at?
It is some of the housing from our housing stock that are currently vacant so that we can declare them surplus. Take the funds from those sales, put them towards things like what we're building on Queen Street. Or we will build on Ross Street.
Well, that's what I understand, but I'm thinking all the homeless people out there. I don't know, would this be a possibility that they? We could do something with the homeless people for these, I don't know the. What type of shape they're in.
Exactly what we're doing, Counselor Herbert, in the building of Queen Street. And the future building on Ross, and if we don't liquidate surplus property to gain the funds to do that. We'll sit forever in the situation we are, we're trying to address it in a much more. Conclusive basis.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right, Counselor Kohler?
Yeah, I had somebody from the public ask the same thing, and I think it's important to note, just like Counselor Wookiee said, and what we've been doing in the past, we're selling one single unit to create many units. So this is what we're doing, and especially with the increased. Property value, we can liquidate some of these and then create that many more houses, so.
Yeah, I I I get what you're saying, Counselor Herbert, we need to house people extremely badly in this community, this is how we accomplish it. And what we've been doing over the last term of this council and even the previous council.
Thank you, it was just a thought I had, so, but thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item relates to community partnership grants update, I have a motion that report TR eleven twenty two. Relating to the community partnership grants update be received for information. Moved by Counselor Burgess. Seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
That concludes the items under this committee, unless the members have anything further. At this time, council will reconvene into regular session, I have a motion. That the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee of the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. By Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
Will now move into reports of committees, the first report relates to heritage alteration permit for the property at three forty one Talbot Street. I have a motion that report MHC fourteen twenty two relating to the heritage alteration permit for three forty one Talbot Street be received for information. And further, the council issue a heritage alteration prop that permit for the property at three forty one Talbot Street. Relating to application EHP eleven twenty two. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Discussion, comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie.
Next report relates to the city's twenty twenty two municipal accessibility plan. I have a motion that report ATCO one twenty two relating to the twenty twenty two municipal accessibility plan be received for information. And further, the council receive and approve the twenty twenty two accessibility plan as attached to report ATCO one twenty two. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Questions or comments, Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much, two things, number one, I appreciate greatly what the what the folks are doing and. It was sad that there's the deficiencies at one password in terms of the the undercuts in the sinks and things like that, and that's too bad that that didn't get. It wasn't a designed feature when they did it, but hopefully we can rectify that. And the second thing is, and you know. I don't want to do a shout out to one person, but Kathy Topping does such a great job over such a long period of time. On this, and I just want to publicly thank her for her. Immense amount of work that she's done and continues to do on this, and it really helps educate me and helps educate us about. What is required for people with different levels of ability, so thank you.
Great. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, next?
The next report is from the Accessibility Committee, it relates to the site audit report. I have a motion that report MAAC O one twenty two relating to the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee Annual Audit. A site audit report be received for information and further that report MAAC O one twenty two be referred to the accessible. Accessibility Technical Committee. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments on the audit? Seeing none, oh, sorry, Counselor Clark, please go ahead. Thanks, just some of the items say ongoing and but just wondering if they will appear before us in next year's budget. I I would assume that some of the ones that we corrected this year did, and I guess we can ask. Mr. Bray, is is that? If it's an ongoing item on an audit, it means some of it's done and some of it isn't, they will come back again?
If it's ongoing, we should look at it to make sure if it can be. Completed under the operating budget, if not, it would have to be brought forward for capital expenditures funding.
All right. So we would know at that time why that was there. Okay, great. Further questions or comments? Seeing none on the audit, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, next item?
Our next item is correspondence has been received from Kathy Topping Acting Chair of the Saint Thomas Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee. Regarding ride bookings on the parallel transit system. If the members wish, I could have a motion to refer this letter to Environmental Services.
Yeah, Counselor Kohler, you have?
Thanks, your worship, I I know this, we brought this up many times and Justin's actually. Addressed this at the podium and for some reason that's. Perception that's out there that. We've been. Clearly told that it's not not the case, so I I don't know if we need a reporter, if Justin wants to clarify that tonight as he has in the past, unfortunately. I think it's coming from people that work. For the provider when they're communicating to some of the riders, but I don't, I'll leave that to Justin whether we want to report or if he wants to speak to it.
Well, and I I know this council voted at the last meeting. To to add another. Bus to parallel. For September, am I am I correct, Mr. Lawrence, is that it's a it's a great that it's brought forward, but it sounds like we've already corrected it or moved towards correcting.
Oh, that's correct, Mr. Mayor, the the timing of this did was a bit odd, they seemed to overlap because. The letter was being written, but just before that council had. Done the solution, which is to add more resources, which is another bus. I I don't believe the the counselor on the committee, Counselor Peters was available to be at that meeting that day. But I think if he was, he might have been able to explain that council had provided the solution already.
Counselor Kohler?
But even prior to the new bus. People weren't being bumped by by the system, if if somebody booked parallel transit, they got their ride, they were not bumped by the. By the system bumping them out of it because they were guaranteed to to have it as long as they booked it prior. The three days before or whatever, that's what was mentioned before, right?
Go ahead.
So, yes, so just to clarify what we've talked about a couple of times before is that there's no, there's no bumping in the system, all riders are treated equally.
Further questions or comments on this letter? Seeing none, and all in favor? Any opposed? We're just taking it as an accepting the report?
Your worship, we don't need to have a motion if we're just receiving the letter for information.
Then that's what we've done.
Thank you. Next, we move on to petitions and communications. First item relates to a request for proclamation and bell ringing. I have a motion that the council of the city of Saint Thomas proclaim September the ninth twenty twenty two. As fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day in the city of Saint Thomas. And further that the bells at City Hall ring nine times at nine oh nine. AM on September ninth twenty twenty two. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Discussions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item is a request for a proclamation flag raising and lighting of the Jumbo Monument. I have a motion that council of the city of Saint Thomas proclaim September twenty twenty two as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month in the city of Saint Thomas. And further that the Big Brothers Big Sisters flag be flown at City Hall from September twelfth to eighteenth twenty twenty two. And further that the Jumbo Monument be lit in teal color from September twelfth to eighteenth twenty twenty two. By Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried?
Next is a request for a proclamation flag raising and a poppy ceremony. I have a motion that council of the city of Saint Thomas proclaim September eighteenth to twenty fourth. Make sure I have that correct, as Legion Week in the city of Saint Thomas and further that the Royal Canadian Legion flag be flown at City Hall from the eighteenth to the twenty fourth. And further that the flag raising ceremony be held at City Hall on September nineteenth twenty twenty two. And further that a poppy ceremony be held at City Hall on October twenty seventh twenty twenty two. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item is a request. From Good Vibes Community Association requesting that council declare the Saint Thomas Summer Harvest Festival. As a municipally significant event, I have a motion that council of the city of Saint Thomas declare the Saint Thomas Summer Harvest Festival. Being held from September. being held from September twenty-third to twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two at Penaford Park to be a, to be declared a municipally significant event. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next is a letter received from the Holy Angels Property Committee Chair regarding a status update to the exterior stairs fronting onto Talbot Street. By Your Worship, I believe this is a matter of information and, uh, should the organization be looking for further information about potential funding opportunities, uh, we would be happy to suggest to them to contact Planning and Building Services. Uh, next item is a copy of a resolution addressed to Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing from the city of Owen Sound regarding removal of municipal councillors from council for prescribed circumstances, including displays of hatred, misogyny, and discrimination. Uh, next item is a copy of a resolution received from the city of Brantford regarding, uh, seeking prosperity and partnership with indigenous nations and a timely resolution of the Haldeman Tract land dispute. Next item is a copy of a, a resolution addressed to A M O from the city of Brantford regarding money laundering in residential real estate. Next item is notice received from Nostrum Biofarm Inc. of amendments to its cannabis license to allow the sale of dried and fresh cannabis to provincially authorized retailers and holders of licenses to sell for medical purposes from its facility at twenty-four Lang Boulevard. Uh, the last item on the agenda is notice received from the Ontario Energy Board regarding an application by Enbridge Gas to change natural gas rates effective January the first, twenty twenty-three. Your worship, unless the items have any, or sorry, the members have any items under communications, we'll now move into unfinished business. Uh, first item is the Truth and Reconciliation Project for the Indigenous Crosswalk on Mondamen Street.
Is this just a report for us to receive or is there a motion for us?
There is a motion, Your Worship. Sorry, had to skip a couple sitting there.
Sorry.
I have motion that report E S fifty-three twenty-two relating to the Truth and Reconciliation Project uh, relating to the Indigenous Crosswalk on Mondamen Street be received for information. And further, the council endorse a painted crosswalk on Mondamen Street north of Talbot Street. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments on the crosswalk? Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you very much. I first and foremost would like to thank staff for this report. When I asked that staff look in to this project for truth and reconciliation for this year for the timeline of September, this report is more than I was hoping for. This is a beautiful acknowledgement and a gentle reminder of where we walk and our collective responsibility to the air, the land, and the water being so close to our city hall. It's also very, very close to our library, which ties into the mural that has just recently been painted facing Mondamen Street, which also pays tribute for the Ojibwa name for corn. And thank you very much again to staff for this report.
Further discussion or comments? Seeing that all in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
Your worship, unless there are any further items of unfinished business, we'll now move into new business.
Uh, Madam Clerk, I think you had an item.
Uh, yes, Your Worship, I'll go first and and I believe Counselor Clark had a motion to put on the floor, so maybe I could have a couple moments to put that together.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to remind members of the public that August the nineteenth at two P M is, uh, the final time where you can submit your nominations. So it's nomination day by two P M. Members of the public can check to see if they are on the preliminary list of electors by, uh, going to the voter lookup dot C A website. And anyone that's, uh, interested in serving on the municipal election compliance committee, we will be posting an ad very shortly and will provide, uh, further information as to the mandate of the committee on the city's website. If anyone has any questions relating to the twenty twenty-two municipal election, please contact customer service and we will make sure that you have your questions answered. Thank you, Your Worship.
Counselor Peters, did I see your hand up? Are you okay? You're okay? Great. All right, Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much. Today I had the privilege of attending the Federation of Canadian Municipalities presentation on the United Nations. And it was a virtual meeting that was held today from two until three thirty by invitation only, and I was very, very fortunate to receive an invitation and to be able to attend this, um, national, um, view from all councils across Canada in regards to climate change and what we are doing to address it at a municipal level. Thank you so very much.
Other items under new business? Counselor Clark?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I I'll defer to the, um, to the clerk, whether it's a, a notice of motion or whether I can whether I can do a a motion under new business, uh, but I would move that the Masters Forty-five Hockey League be allotted their historic ice time for the upcoming season. And further, that we ask staff to review and update our present, uh, ice policy.
Peters will second.
Okay, so we have a mover and second or comments on it? Counselor Kohler?
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, I I certainly agree with the motion, but I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could, and if maybe Jeff can see if this is going to cause a problem that to ensure that all groups are guaranteed their current ice allocation because it's not just this group that's being affected right now. I know some groups were requesting more hours, which I know that's at this time not available, but I'd hate to see us put this motion in place and then a different group gets kicked out based under that, but certainly support it all the the way it's especially looking at the policy later on, but I I'd hate to see us just move it down to a different group being affected.
Mr. Bray, could you let us know that I I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but if we move this and that occurs, you would let us know in the report you you'll come back to with us?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, definitely.
Okay.
And I might add, all the other groups that were impacted have been accommodated, but I understand what you're saying. It could be, uh, cascading effect that they further get displaced.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much. I didn't say anything, uh, I didn't ask any questions after the presentation. But my statement, I guess, is this. To me, we're not sure what Saint Thomas Minor Hockey wants, okay? And and it sounds, and having been a hockey parent, I know those seven A M practices stink. But it sounds like we could, they can make it work for this year. And my, and so I'm just trying to go through my thought process. I think Saint Thomas Minor Hockey can make it work for this year, and it's going to be a pain in the butt. But I think that after this year, they'll have an idea of what their numbers are going to be going forward. So I want to say that the council of the day next year, well, I'm sure we'll be having to talk about this, and I want to stress to all members of public that nobody owns an ice time and allocation. And there's supply and demand issues on a number of fronts, and I'm happy that I think the over forty-five will will get their time this year, but next year, after this first year of the change in boundaries, I think there's going to have to be another discussion, and it certainly would help if registrations happen. I know, I know, I understand the whole situation, but if registrations could happen earlier for minor hockey, we could have, we'd be having a much better idea right now of what we are facing. Uh, you know, the over forty-five guys know who's going to play for the most part. And I know it's difficult because it's in the middle of summer, I've run it on holidays, but I just want to say that I I support it right now. But I think we've got to look at this again, the next council ongoing. Okay, thank you.
I think that's the report that that, uh, Min- Mr. Bray has said he was bringing back to us on what will it look like? Is there changes to the current allocation process or or how it works? So, um, we can certainly have a much more fulsome discussion when that occurs to us too. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I I certainly support the motion because a couple of things in my mind is uh, and I think it's obvious to everybody, it's been twenty-six years as league minor hockey and discussing tonight haven't really accommodated talking to to the gentleman that gave the, uh, speech, they're trying to make things work out, but listening to Counselor Clark and Jeff tonight, we might only be talking a couple hours that we're trying to find room for minor hockey. So I I I think and the other fact is too that I think the the gentleman who spoke that, uh, they had to be notified by June second or if there was going to be a change, and yet they weren't told to the second week in July. That that's, that's, that doesn't sit well with me that they were given. It's just like, okay, we're taking the ice time for me on Thursday. Have a good day. And 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 as Jeff said, or the gentleman said, he's tried to contact minor hockey and and they don't call him, don't want to talk to him. Anyway, I think I'm happy to support the motion because I think we're really supporting a bunch of a a bunch of great guys that pay taxes in the city, make donations to minor hockey. And they've had that ice time for a long time. So anyway, I I'm supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie.
Your worship, unless there are any further items under new business, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws.
Peters?
Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Madam Clerk, I think this may be a great time for us to stop to go to open meetings. Am I right? I've got six o'clock and
Your worship will just be a couple more minutes.
Okay, then, if you think we can do them, let's do it. Great. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, next?
I have a motion by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Herbert that oops, skipped one there. That the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time?
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the eighth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Next bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to appoint an area weed inspector to enforce the provisions of the Weed Control Act in the city of Saint Thomas, being Quinn Moise.
Questions or comments? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you. Uh, I have the same question for two and three. Are these full-time positions or just for this year? Are they permanent?
Mr. Bray? Oops, so.
Sorry, through Mayor Preston, they're current permanent positions.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Next bylaw, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to appoint a municipal bylaw enforcement officer being Megan Burns.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Next bylaw.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and two seven three five one two five Ontario Inc. Uh, this relates to site plan, uh, file for two forty-eight Talbot Street for four, four-story seventeen-unit multi-residential building.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Next bylaw, please.
The fifth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Wellington Manor Developments Limited. Uh, this relates to Manor Wood subdivision, stage two, sixty-nine lots for single detached dwellings.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Next bylaw, please.
Sixth and final bylaws, a bylaw to provide for regulating the construction, maintenance, and protection of boulevards within the geographic limits of the city of Saint Thomas.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Your worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the six bylaws. Great.
I have motion by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Herbert, that the reported council uh, in committee of the whole on the six bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time and gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Uh, Your Worship, I realize we're going into a public meeting, but perhaps prior to doing that, uh, this would be a time, uh, to advise that we will be moving into closed session uh, following the public meeting, and I do have a motion that the meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. A proposed or pending disposition of land and three personal matters about identifiable individuals.
Mover and second.
Sorry, moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Burgess.
Great. Before we get questions or comments on it, means when we go into, we're now going to go into a public meeting on three different topics um, on different areas in Saint Thomas, and when we're done with the public meetings, we will go immediately to closed session. So anyone watching us at home or, uh, viewing us, uh, streaming, please, uh, know that we've, uh, finished our meeting for tonight. When we are finished, the public meetings, we'll go right to our closed session. From there, we'll adjourn when we're done with our closed session and the meeting will be over. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. Closed session, or sorry.
Your worship, uh, the first public meeting deals with the Mills Drain.
Alright, and I will say this is a public meeting as required by section forty-two of the Drainage Act to afford affected landowners an opportunity to make representation with respect to the engineer's report regarding Mills Drain. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the technical aspects of the engineer's report in the Mills Drains and concern regarding individual assessments will not be dealt with until the final report has been considered adopted and a provisional bylaw passed. The meeting for the Court of Revision Regarding Assessment will be re- will be scheduled at a later date and notice will be mailed to the owners of every property that has been assessed into the subject drain. Uh, first of all, do any members of council have a, a disclosure of interest? Seeing none? Uh, Madam Clerk, what method of notice wa- and when was the notice given to the public for this meeting?
Uh, Your Worship, notice was provided to the affected property owners and to the municipality of Central Elgin on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to introduce Nathan Bookma, who needs no introduction, but we'll do it anyway. We'll introduce, uh, Nathan and, uh, the manager of development and compliance, and he'll help us review the process. Uh, Mr. Bookma, I leave it with you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I just would like to, first off, ask the host, uh, I do believe we have an attendee, uh, John Sprey. He's our drainage engineer, so he would need to be brought in as a panelist. And, uh, when John gets brought in, he can give us an overview of the process for the Mills Drain. Um, and we can have a, it can move on from there. So I see John's being brought in now. So, uh, John Sprey was appointed as per the Drainage Act as, uh, our drainage engineer for this assignment, and he can give us an overview of, uh, what has been done for this, uh, municipal drain. So, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Tonight's meeting is the consideration of the Mills Drain reassessment. Uh, this, there's no real construction on this drain. This drain, this report came about as a result of the subdivision work at Southdale and Centennial Road. Um, there was a new subdivision constructed and changed some of the watershed of the Mills Drain. So we're simply trying to do the paperwork to make sure that the maintenance of the Mills Drain in the future is assessed out correctly. So that's what this report does. It sets new schedules so that the appropriate people are assessed the appropriate costs if repair work is done. Are there any questions?
No questions from council? Then we will move to the, uh, have we received any written submissions on the proposed changes?
Your worship, there have been no written submissions.
Okay, well, then I'll ask council if they have any further questions. Seeing none, then I'll say before I open the floor to questions from any of the affected landowners, please be advised if there, if any affected landowner wished to receive further information on the actions of council regarding the Mills Drain, please email customer service at customerservice@stathamus.ca and provide your name and address. For those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified, you could call customer service at five one nine six three one one six eight zero and extension zero and provide your name and address the same information. I'll now open the meeting, uh, to questions from the public. And if you're listening on your computer, tablet, or smartphone, please click the raised hand button, raise hand button. And if you're called into the meeting using a telephone, please hit star nine. And the questions will be taken in the order we get them. And when the, when given the opportunity to speak, please provide your name and address for the clerk's record. So is there anyone with questions from the public tonight? Raise your hand, shout out, wave a little. I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone with questions from the public tonight? Uh, if you're in attendance, uh, and would like to raise a comment, please do so using the raised hand i- icon. Using the raised hand i- icon in order for us to see that you'd like to ask a question. Any further questions from council? Well, seeing none, then I might, uh, in, in the opinion of the mayor, the public's been given a fair opportunity. To express their views regarding the Mills Drain and, and it should be stated. Everyone's been given a fair opportunity to express their views. And if there are any further questions, please be advised that any person wishing further information on the actions of council regarding. The Mill Strain should email customer service at customer service at St. Thomas dot C A. Provide your name and address and suggest that you're calling on about the, the Mill Strain. And those that don't have access to a computer and wish to be notified should call customer service at five, one, nine, six, three, one, one, six, eight, zero. Extension zero and provide that same information. This public meeting is now concluded. The provisional bylaw to adopt the engineer's report has been placed on the council agenda for consideration at a later date. Now for our second public meeting tonight. Uh, we'll call this public meeting to order and should advise the, uh, you all of the, of the following. Uh, this public meeting is required under the Planning Act to afford any person an opportunity to make representation. With respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for the lands known as ten twenty-four Talbot. For a proposed medical clinic development. Before we begin, members of the public are advised that if a person or a public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting. Or make written submissions to the corporation of the city of St. Thomas before bylaws are passed. The person or public body is not allowed, is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council. Of the corporation of the city of St. Thomas to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Further, if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting. Or make written submissions to the corporation, the city of St. Thomas before the bylaws are passed. The person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunals unless. In the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. Those wanting to be notified of the council's decision should email customer service at customer service at St. Thomas dot C A. And provide your name and address. Those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified. Should call customer service at five, one, nine, six, three, one, one, six, eight, zero. Extension zero and provide the same information. Do any members of part of parliament, I've given you all promotion tonight, that's great. Any members of council? Have um, any disclosures of interest on this topic? Seeing none? And a clerk, what method of notice and when was the notice given to the public for this meeting?
Your worship, notice was provided in the St. Thomas Times Journal on Friday, July fifteenth. And in accordance with council's policies, notice was also mailed to the property owners within a hundred and twenty meters of each of the properties that are subject to tonight's public meeting.
Okay, I will now introduce the manager of planning services, Jim McCoom. Who also needs no induc- no introduction, who will provide the background information on the propose, on the proposal and present the draft bylaws. Mr. McCoom.
Thank you, worship. I'm just gonna share my screen. I trust everybody can see this.
We're just waiting for it, Mr. McCoom.
Okay.
Ready to go, Mr. McCoom.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, as Mary indicated, this is a proposed official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for a proposed medical center. On the subject lands, they're shown on the location plan shown on this first screen. Uh, located on the south side of Talbot Street, immediately to the west of the Park Ave Road allowance. Here is a larger shot of that uh, location plan, again showing the subject plans. So there's two parts or two applications here. One is for amendment to the official plan. The uh, lands are currently designated in the highway commercial designation. Which does not permit a medical clinic, and so the amendment is required. So the first part of the amendment is an introductory statement saying that all of this part of the document entitled part B constitutes amendment number one oh three to the official plan of the city of St. Thomas. Part two uh, has the details of the amendment and states that the official plan is as amended or is amended as follows. Item one, the area shown on the attached schedule I, land use plan numbered one oh three. And shown in heavy solid lines is subject to the amendment contained in item two. So here is a, a schedule I, the location plan, and within the inset here, you can see the subject lands again in the heavy solid line. And item two states that a medical center and accessory uses are permitted as additional uses on the lands numbered one oh three on the location plan, attaches appendix one to the amendment. The use of the lands for a medical center subject to the following. Part I, an amendment to the zoning bylaw to implement the use and part II, a site plan approval. And finally, under part three, implementation interpretation states that the implementation and interpretation of this amendment. Shall be in accordance with the respective policies of the city of St. Thomas official plan. There is a concurrent zoning bylaw amendment to go along with the official plan amendment. The first part of the zoning bylaw amendment states that zoning map seventeen. As amended is further amended by zoning the lands shown outlined in heavy solid line on schedule A here to. As C seven dash thirty-two, the schedule shall be added form part of bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight. It shall be known as special zoning map seventeen dash twenty-four. So here is a draft of that special zoning map seventeen dash twenty-four, again showing the sub- sort of subject lands in the heavy solid line. Being placed into the C seven thirty-two designation. Part two of the amendment states that bylaw fifty-eight dash eighty-eight is further amended by adding a new paragraph. Eighteen point five point thirty-two, the area affected is a C seven thirty-two, as was shown in the special zoning map part. The additional permitted uses are a medical center and accessory uses. We have a minimum lot area established at ninety-eight hundred square meters. And a minimum number of parking spaces of a hundred and twenty-four. We have a definition being put in place for a medical center, meaning a building or part thereof. Other than a hospital used solely for the purpose of consultation, diagnosis and treatment of human patients. By one or more legally qualified physicians, dentists, optometrists, toropitists, osteopaths, chiropractors, registered massage therapists. Physiotherapists or drugless practitioners. Together with their qualified assistants, without limiting the generality of the foregoing, the building may include administrative offices, waiting rooms, treatment rooms. Laboratories, pharmacies and dispensaries, accessory to and directly associated with the center and shall not include accommodation for inpatient care. Or rooms for major surgery. Part three of the amendment states that anticipation of the eventual consolidation of the bylaw. There is a consolidated version of zoning map seventeen, known as schedule B to the amendment that shows all changes made to date on that map art, including this amendment. So here is that consolidated map part, again with the subject lands. At the top of the map part being shown, being placed into the uh, the new zoning designation. And finally, your worship, I do have a couple of uh, uh, illustrations here just to show the concept was being proposed. This is their initial conceptual site plan. And the building look being located in the southerly part of the property. And a lot of the parking being located on the uh, lands that were formerly the CP rail uh, connection that is now currently terminates at Talbot Street. Um, so lots of parking for this proposed use. And also we have a illustration of the uh, elevation, the, this will be the front elevation of the proposed building as is uh, the concept to date. So your worship, that is the draft of both amendments, and if there are any questions, um. Uh, please advise.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCoom. Uh, madam clerk, have we received any written submissions on the proposed changes?
Your worship, we have not received any written submissions.
Okay, council, questions from council. Councillor Herbert first.
Thank you, worship. I, I, I think the clinic's a, a great idea for all the things that are proposed for it. I just wonder, is there any concern about the traffic? You got a hundred and twenty-four parking spaces. Uh, will they be accessing directly to Talbot Street? I- is there a concern with it? I don't know. I just wondered if it was taken into consideration. Thank you.
Mr. McCoom.
Thank you, worship. Traffic was examined as a part of the overall proposal. I don't believe there's any uh, issue associated with this. A lot of parking spaces in there, uh, but as most people are aware, uh, you know, medical appointments are on an appointment basis. You know, regular basis, so traffic would be uh, turning over uh, through the course of the entire day. So I don't believe there's any uh, particular concern. I'm just gonna share my screen again. And point out the. On the conceptual site plan, so we have two accesses here. One directly from Talbot Street and the other one out to the Park Ave uh, section here that is still owned by the city. So there'll be two possible access points uh, to this property. And so, yeah, staff as part of the consultation did examine this, and I believe Environmental Services is content with the proposed accesses.
Thank you. Councillor Wookiee.
Thank you, worship. Uh, back to our old story about the extension of Park Ave and the whole exit to Park Ave, Jim. So we're in. In this development, it's exiting the park, the stub of Park Ave. Is part of this development repaving and putting like, uh. You know, rehabilitating that little section of road, is there gonna be, and I, I don't want to sound like, uh, I think people are idiots, but is there gonna be like a. A fenced off area so people don't just go out and turn right and go across the dirt and over to the other part of Park Ave? Is there any discussion of extending Park Ave through? Over that property, um, just wondering about that little stub there and what you guys uh, see. As the way it's gonna look when it's done. Thank you.
Mr. McCoom.
Thank you, your worship, through you to councillor Wookiee. Um, as councillors aware from previous uh, applications that we've, we've dealt with, that land to the south of the stub. Is under private ownership and so uh, we will examine how or if there's a requirement to uh, put any sort of. Traffic control measures on there at the site plan stage. Um, so that will be examined at that time, and I'm sure Environmental Services will have some comments in that regard.
Councillor Clark.
Uh, thanks, your worship. That, that was my, my, my question as well. And I, I think Environmental Services is, is working on that. We talked earlier about the um, the Fairview Bridge. And I would think that before you could close a section like Fairview, you might be looking at a Park Ave extension to relieve some of that. Traffic when the construction's taking place. So look forward to an updated report on Park Ave.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much to my fellow members for asking the questions regarding traffic. I certainly do appreciate those. They were. Ones that I had. My question goes back, if we can go back, Jim. Please to the allowable uses, I, there were two I didn't see, one being midwife and the other being nurse practitioner. Are they allowable uses underneath this medical clinic?
Mr. McCoom.
Thank you, your, your worship, through you to councillor Baldwin Sands. Yeah, the definition that we have in, in the uh, proposed amendment is intended to be essentially all encompassing to any sort of health practitioner. So if there are um, certain protection practitioners that were not specifically mentioned. Um, they normally would be associated with this type of a facility, and so, yeah, they would be permitted.
Thank you.
Further questions from council? I have no further questions from council. We will go to the uh, public. Find my spot. Open the meeting to public for those attending who have not already submitted their concerns to the city. If you're listening on your computer, tablet or smartphone, click the raised hand. Icon, and if you called into the meeting or using a telephone, press dial nine, star nine. The questions will be taken in that order and we'll can, give the opportunity to speak. Please provide your name and address for the clerk's record. Any members of the public who wish to speak to this? Okay, see no response. I'll ask again, are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this public meeting? Seeing that, I'll ask council again, is there any other member of council that would like to add further questions or comments to the proceedings on this o- public meeting? Everyone has been given a fair opportunity to express their views, and if there are no further questions, please. Be advised in any person wishing further information on the actions of council regarding the passing. Of a bylaw for the proposed amendment should email customer service at customer service at St. Thomas dot C A. And provide their name and address. Those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified. Should call customer service at five, one, nine, six, three, one, one, six, eight, zero, extension zero. And provide the same information. This meeting is now concluded. We'll call this next public meeting to order and should advise the public of the following. That this public meeting is required by the St. Thomas official plan to afford any person an opportunity to make representation. With respect to the proposed condominium conversion for lands known as four twenty Wellington Street or four thirty Wellington Street. Those wanting to be notified of council's decision. Should email customer service at customer service at St. Thomas dot C A and provide their name and address. Those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified. Should call customer service at five, one, nine, six, three, one, one, six, eight, zero, extension zero and provide that same information. Do any of the members of council have a disclosure of interest concerning the matters on this agenda? What method of notice and when was the notice given to the, to the public for this meeting?
Your worship, notice was provided in the St. Thomas Times Journal on Friday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And notice was hand delivered to all units in the existing apartment buildings on April the fourth, twenty twenty-two. In accordance with the official plan policies.
I'll now uh, reintroduce uh, manager of planning services, Jim McCoom, who provide the background information on the proposed condominium proposals. Mr. McCoom.
Thank you very much, your worship. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so as per the introduction by his worship, the um, two properties here are, are, it's two. Applications that we have concurrently before us tonight. But we decided to handle them as one uh, meeting because they essentially are dealing with the exact same thing. It's the same applicant. They own both buildings and they're side by side at four twenty and four thirty Wellington Street. And those properties are shown on the location plan on the screen. Here is a uh, further close up of four twenty, which is the westerly building and four thirty, which is easterly building. The parking area is located in behind and they do have a deck of parking at the very back as well. As far as the condominium plans themselves are concerned, um, this is what the plan is going to look like for. Four twenty Wellington Street, again, some most westerly property. It's a seven-story apartment and the plan also shows the ground floor and uh, floors, two to seven floor plans. And similarly for four thirty, again, showing the location of the building as well as the floor plans for each floor. And we have a representative from uh, MHBC Planning, it's Emily Elliott. She's a planner and associate uh, with MHBC. And she's going to uh, take counsel in the public through the balance of the presentation.
Great. Uh, thanks. Thank you, Jim. Uh, and good evening, Mayor Preston and members of council. My name is Emily Elliott and I'm a planner with MHBC as Jim said. We are the applicants regarding these uh, condominium conversions, uh, conversion applications. And my presentation this evening will focus on providing an overview of the project. Uh, and summarizing the tenant protections that are in place, which is uh, the requirement of the official plan is uh, for this public meeting. And to talk about the tenant protections for existing residents. Um, so as Jim mentioned, this application relates to four twenty and four thirty Wellington Street. Um, and they do operate together as one building, but are technically separate properties, which is why there are two applications uh, before each night. Next slide, please. So um, Jim provided a good uh, overview of the applications and their locations, so. Uh, just briefly, they're located on the south side of Wellington Street, east of Highbree Drive and across from the Elgin Centre Mall. They're each occupied by a seven-story apartment building and there's a total of a hundred and thirty-one units. The site is professionally managed by. The site is professionally managed by Real Star Management Partnership. And Real Star is a privately owned real estate investment and management company that's focused largely on rental residential. They manage approximately twenty five thousand suites across Canada and over the past fifteen years. They've completed about fifteen condominium conversion projects. And during this time, no units in any of the buildings have been, have been sold. Next slide please. So this slide provides a bit of a summary of the condo conversion application process. Condominium conversion is the process from converting a rental property that's held in one ownership to individually owned units that can be sold as condominiums. In this case, the owners intend to maintain ownership and not sell any of the units. As a result, the building will continue, the both buildings will continue to operate as rental. Which means that for existing tenants, there will be no change to the operation and management of the building as a result of the conversion. The application is requested for financial, administrative and legal purposes and it's considered to be technical. Next slide please. So the next two slides show the draft plans of condominium, which have already been shared this evening. This one is for four twenty Wellington and it shows that all existing apartment units in the building are to be units within the condominium. And any common areas like, which are shared spaces in the building will be common elements within the plan of condominium. And that's for internal and external common spaces. And there, you can also see that there's no construction or demolition required for the condominium. Next slide please. And this slide shows the draft plan of condominium for four thirty Wellington. And again, it shows the existing units in the building as units and the common element areas that are inside, inside the building. Next slide please. The next few slides provide information regarding tenant protection for residents. So following the conversion of a building from rental tenure to condominium tenure, tenant security continues to be governed by the Residential Tenancies Act. So in the case of condominium conversions, this includes that tenants have a right to residency within the building. Which specifically means that the current owner or any subsequent owner cannot terminate a tenancy to sell a unit. If the owner ever does sell a unit, the existing tenant would have the first right to buy the unit and this is called first right of refusal. And if the tenant chooses not to buy a unit, they would continue to have a lifetime right to remain as a tenant. There will also be no condominium fees imposed on tenants as a result of this process. And as I mentioned previously, there's no intention to sell any of the units in these buildings. So there will be no change to the operation of the, the building for current tenants. Uh, next slide. So the last kind of protection under the Residential Tenancies Act is that when realty taxes are reduced by two point four nine percent or. The R T A requires that tax savings are to be passed on through to existing tenants as a rent reduction. The rent reduction is to be equal to the owner's per unit property tax reduction. At this time, the amount of tax savings or the rent reduction is unknown. The approximate amount of red, rent reduction is estimated to be about fifteen to fifty dollars per unit. Next slide. Uh, this slide gives a brief overview of the process to date and outlines the next steps. So notice that the application was provided to residents of the building while in advance of the application being submitted back in April. And that was to allow represent or residents in the building to contact Real Star. And have their questions answered early on. The application was formally submitted in May and processed by city staff. At the June eleventh meeting of council, the application was recommended for draft approval and this meeting was scheduled. And, and in terms of next steps, the conditions of approval must be satisfied to the satisfaction of the city. Following which the condominium can be registered. And the recommended conditions of approval included entering into an agreement with the city of Saint Thomas. Preparing a building condition assessment and undertaking any repairs that were necessary. To ensure that the building meets the requirements of the building code, fire code and the city. And determining whether any utility or drainage reasons are required and if they are granting them to the appropriate authority. And then finally preparing condominium declaration, which the city will have to approve before it's registered. Next slide please. And that concludes my presentation for this evening and I'd be pleased to answer any questions of council or the public. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Madam clerk, have we received any written submissions on the proposed changes?
Your worship, there were no written submissions regarding this proposal.
Okay, then we'll swing to council's questions of Ms. Elliott or Mr. McCoom. So we'll open the meeting to council questions. Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much. I have a, a general question for Emily about these and all other conversions. And I just want to be satisfied on behalf of the residents there that this does not change. The owner's ability to raise rents, like there's no change to rent control rules as a part of this, is there because?
No.
That's, that's obviously a concern. Thank you.
No, there are no changes to rules related to rent control. Tenancy continues to be covered by the rules of the Residential Tenancies Act.
Thank you.
Further questions from council? Seeing none, then we'll open the floor to anyone from the public. For those attending who have not already submitted and we have received those submissions. If you're listening on your computer or smartphone, please click the raised hand icon. And if you are called into the, if you have called into the meeting using a telephone, please dial star nine on your phone. And the questions will be taken in the order in which they're received. When, when given the opportunity to speak, please provide your name and address for the clerk's records. So do we have any questions or comments from the public this evening? Any other questions or comments from the public? And I'll return back to councils or any other questions or comments from the council. Everyone has been given a fair opportunity to express their views and if there are no further questions, please be advised. That any person wishing further information. On the actions in council regarding the proposed condominium conversions. Please, you should email customer service at customer service at Saint Thomas dot C A and provide your name and address. Those that do not have a access to a computer and wish to be notified should call customer service. At five one nine six three one one six eight zero, extension zero, and provide that same information. This meeting is now concluded. That ends our public meetings for this evening.